Okay, we're on.
Yeah.
Call the meeting to order. Councilmember Thomas Moore will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Masalavet.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vera Papa.
Here.
Councilmember Deaton.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sustarsik. All present.
Thank you. This is by motion of the City Council, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Are there any councilmembers who would like to pull an item?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to pull item K, please.
A. Is that all?
I would like to pull A and F, please.
A and F.
There's no need to pull A, just for reference, since it's a council item, we'll be making a presentation and council can ask questions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to pull H, and also, I'm going to abstain from I, since I was not involved in the negotiation.
I will also be abstaining from I, since I wasn't involved in the negotiation.
Okay. All right, let's have a motion for, to approve the consent calendar items C, D, E, F, G, I, J.
So, Mayor, if I could...
No, how do we do that with abstaining?
So, we just, at this point, we just need approval of the agenda, and once we get to consent calendar, we'll take a motion then to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of, what I got was items F, H, and K were pulled. So, we can, we can take that motion at that time, right now, we just need a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Okay, that's five to zero. And... We're gonna pull F, H, and K, right? Am I straight on that? Okay. And... How are we do, how do we do this with the abstentions?
Well, at that time, it just gets noted for the record by the city clerk.
Okay. So, we can vote on the consent calendar? Or do we need to?
Later on. At this time, it's, it's your first presentation.
Okay. Okay, review of the senior mobility program, consideration of modifying the existing Orange County Transportation Authority Senior Mobility Program Agency Service Plan. Say that all in one sentence.
So, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you again. If we can just back up before we get there to presentations and we'll have...
I missed the whole rest of these.
That's okay.
Sorry about that.
And then we'll follow that by oral communications, and then we'll move on to Agenda Item A.
I seem to have a habit of doing that. Okay, we will go to presentations. Sorry, Steve. We have a presentation of proclamation this evening by Steve Bowles. He's gonna be presenting this. Over 200 years, the coast of California has experienced at least two dozen tsunamis, 15 of which have damaged our coastal communities. The city of Seal Beach is a tsunami-ready community. This is a national certification issued by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration and the National Weather Service. Could Steve Bowles come up, please?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff. On behalf of all of your public safety here in the city of Seal Beach, because we are one big collaborative team, Marine Safety, Orange County Fire, and the Police Department, emergency management, emergency preparedness is one of our top priorities. As we know, inclement weather, catastrophes can hit anytime. So, we take it as a, we're very proud of this certification every year, and I'm very proud of the staff that works for us directly, Sergeant Dave Barr, Sergeant Mike Ezrow, and the rest of our team who worked very diligently on this preparation. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful job.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, oral communications, once again. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Would anyone like to speak this evening?
Good evening, Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I'd like to speak to Item H, which is the current update on the city's strategic objectives. This is the last update of four that followed the goal-setting meeting that we had back in October up at the Old Ranch Country Club. At that time, there was a number of objectives set, and I'd like to do two things tonight. One is, I want to talk about how we've done in accomplishing those objectives, and then also about the process a little bit. What you're getting right now is a chart that I made comparing the original objectives, their original target dates, with whether these objectives have been accomplished on time, accomplished late, or not done yet. The, I counted 19 objectives that did not involve outside agencies. There were two that involved the Coastal Commission and the State Lands Commission, and those are out of, out of staff's control. But there were 19 that were under staff's control, and as of today, and as of the deadline for about half of the goals being this Friday, we've gotten four out of 19 done on time, three were accomplished late, and 12 of the goals, 12, excuse me, of the objectives were not done. I'm sure staff will explain to you later why they didn't do better on that, but I think it's important to have an accounting of how we did. I think that's the purpose of having goals and objectives, is to get things done, and so having some sort of accountability and a look back on what we've done and how much we've accomplished, I think's important. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the goal meeting. I don't know if, if the council or the public is aware of how much the one-day goal-setting session that we had at Old Ranch Country Club last October actually cost us. We hired a consultant, Marilyn Snyder, to run that. Her fee was almost $3,200, and then she came with an associated transcriptionist, and that fee was about $1,550. And then for, to rent the room and the luncheon for the City Council and the 17 staff members that attended it, that was about $1,000. So, the total cost of that one hour, that one-day event was over $5,700. The city, right now, is doing these every six months. I said the last one was October. The staff report mentions that the next one is next Tuesday, April 4th. That one will also be at Old Ranch. I don't know whether Ms. Snyder is gonna be used for that event or not. Ms. Snyder has run two events, right, already. The first one she did was in April, and she's very skilled. She really runs a meeting extremely well. I attended, I think I attended both meetings. She's very good. However, it's not rocket science, and I would think that after watching two meetings, that our own staff, perhaps our assistant city manager, Mr. Galagos, could run that meeting, or our city manager could run that meeting. We have a city clerk that can keep notes, and so I really don't think we should be paying contractors $4,700 every six months to run a one-day meeting. I think we could do that in-house, using the model that Ms. Snyder's kind of already set up for us.
One minute, please.
The other thing I want to mention is that other cities do it differently. There was an article in the paper from Newport Beach, and about their goal-setting, which they had in January, and theirs is very different from ours in that it's on a Saturday rather than during the week. It was a three-hour meeting that did not involve any meals. There were no consultants involved, and at our, at our goal meeting, the public got three minutes to speak at the beginning, and that was it. In Newport Beach, the public got to speak three times in the beginning, and then after two major presentations, the public got to chime in. There were only four or five staff members there, and they were outnumbered by the public. And finally, it was done at a public facility, so there wasn't a $1,000 facility fee. I know we have two council people who will be attending the meeting formally the first time, but I'd like to, like for you all to consider that in the future, that we look at some other models for goal-setting. One that perhaps is a little more oriented towards the residents, a little bit less oriented towards staff, and that can be done without expending, you know, literally over $11,000 a year. Thank you very much.
Mr. Goldberg, did it mention if the staff was paid on that Saturday or not?
I don't know whether the staff were paid.
That'd be a good question to find out.
Yeah.
I mean, we could look into that and let us know, because I think on Saturday, I'm not sure what their policy is, but...
Yeah. Well, the staff that attended were all exempt executives. There were Public Works Director, Finance Director, and City Manager, and the Community Development Director. Those were the, the four people that spoke, and those are all exempt employees.
So, it was a strategic meeting with only four members of the whole staff for the whole city?
Those were the four staff members that spoke.
That spoke, or that were attending it?
I don't know how many were else, were in attendance.
Okay, well, that's good to find out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, and City Staff. My name is Dave Burgess. The subject which I discussed last month, and I will discuss probably till most people are tired of me hearing about it. I think, well, I know, Councilman Deaton said, you know, "Let's not dredge up the past. Let's move forward in where we're at." Well, in the case of the shops of Rossmore, which is within the city of Seal Beach, not Rossmore, I don't think that applies here. The, the city of Seal Beach, and specifically on this project, are touting that we're, well, specifically on the LA Fitness, it's a community facility. I don't feel that way. I, I said last month, you know, 80% of the people live south of 405. I've attended numerous meetings. So, back to my going into history versus moving forward. The city of Seal Beach, in my opinion, and it's not widely shared, but there are others, are feeling that the city of Seal Beach isn't, in fact, not being a good neighbor and not being a community member with the city, with Rossmore. And it doesn't matter what, it's just an adjoining, I understand, you know, geographics and all that, but I think 20 years ago or so, they converted the Rossmore Park Apartments into condos, and those parking spots were sold. So, the city of Seal Beach residents, not take, nothing personal against them, are parking on both sides of Montecito and onto the streets in Rossmore. That's not city of Seal Beach. Unfortunately, Rossmore hasn't taken a stand, which I believe they should, and actually enforce it. And they relayed the parking, on June 1st, there's gonna be about 150 cars that are gonna be pushed out of the parking behind, to the east of the, that one parking area, which some may know, some don't. Where are they gonna go? They're going on Rossmore Streets. The city of Seal Beach, 20 years ago, 19 years ago, and certainly when the parking was restriped in January-ish, it's the city of Seal Beach's responsibility, and Rossmore's, everybody's responsibility, goes, "Seal Beach, we got a problem. It's coming up in five months and one minute. What are we gonna do about it?" To my knowledge, nothing's being done. We're gonna wait till they park out there. I've attended, and let me go back, a year ago, three, two commissions and the council on this project specifically. Four to one against by the EQ Board to not allow it. Three to two for it, which was appealed by the public, and then the City Council ruled on it in the June meeting, and instead of the city attorney drafting a resolution that said, uphold the resolution, it passes, or don't withhold the resolution, only the presentation, or the resolution to say, we're denying the appeal to going forward. So then, lo and behold, legally, the developer with polls is application and reissues it in December. It doesn't really sit well with a lot of people, process-wise. So, I don't want to be critical, because I've been on the board on Rossmore. It's not pretty when a councilperson actually asks city staff for information and confirmation with a date and when it's gonna be done, but, and I'm losing my train of thought. I've attended the last two quote-unquote town hall meetings put on by the developer. The platform of the ones that were held last year was developers up front, giving their presentation, give the audience a chance to ask questions, then the developer has to publicly give an answer. This time...
One minute, please.
They've got about five or six easels up there, and just one minor example, parking. City of Seal Beach needs to look at that, because the developers stay and they're gonna lose 40 parking spots. It's untrue. They're gonna lose 115, and they said they're gonna make it up and finish efficiencies by reconfiguring the parking lot. Doesn't work that way. Anybody that knows anything about parking lots, you can't convert it this way unless the developer's gonna buy us all Mini Coopers to park in, you know, four-by-four parking spots. It's not gonna work. Anyway, I, I, I asked the city of Seal Beach and the staff, council persons, to really take a hard look at this, because the EIR, which wasn't done in the last 50 years, which I'm almost done, again, I'll say, there's ne, to my knowledge, never been an EIR done on that quote-unquote grandfathered in, because the square footage just didn't cha, it shouldn't change, you know, post 2000. Well, I know for a fact that there wasn't a two-story, 85,000 square foot building, two stories like there is at Kohl's now. So, there's 85, 75, 80. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Joyce?
Joyce Ross Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm back. And I'm back. And speaking of the Police Department and the picture in the paper, where was the picture of all the mayors that objected to the city manager? Where's that picture? I'd like to see the picture of all the mayors in the paper as well. So, food. Councilwoman Vera Papa, are you aware that you're eating pizza out of the general fund? She's putting the food bill now in the general fund. Now, we have potholes all around town. What's more important? Your pizza or potholes? So, a very important ruling just came down from the California Supreme Court. Public records and private emails are still public. Let's see, we have the old attorney here again, okay? Public records and private emails are still public. So, I know that she has a private email. It went public once in all the emails. So, guess what I'm gonna ask for now? And the phone records, the phone records. We need to have phone records of who, what's going on, with who's communicating with who. Public records and private emails are still public. That was a big case. Took a while to get down here, but it's now the law. So, we can start finding out exactly who's talking to who and who's communicating with who, when they're supposed to be out here trying to protect our citizens on the streets? I mean, what problems have they solved here in Old Town? I'm not sure about College Park West and College Park East, but we have a lot of break-ins. So, they put us, put a big sign over there, just close your doors, lock your doors. Well, where's the cop? And the car? They're supposed to be protecting all of us. They broke into a car right behind the fire station. They broke into, they were trying to break into a house on Fifth Street. They shot up a car over here off of Ocean Avenue behind the house. Did they ever find that criminal? I mean, when I go on Zillow, it says crime. Crime has gone up in Seal Beach. And where are these cops? They come down here and they want to praise you, the city manager, who is not being transparent at all with your contracts. I understand now you're writing more contracts. I mean, do you, we have to have, how many contracts do we have to have on the oil company? Didn't we just have one a couple of years ago? Were we supposed to be paying that guy, what, for 20 years, or whatever he fines? What happened to that guy? Did he disappear? Were we still paying him? There's a lot of money going out. And then, on top of that, here it is, it's in the LA Times. Offenders opting out for less than going to jail, they're going to the Seal Beach bed and breakfast. What I call the Seal Beach bed and breakfast, because we help pay for them to stay there. They don't pay their share. And here's a guy, I guess he did a white-collar crime, but he was able to pay for his whole time, $7,000-something dollars in a check. Well, if he can write a check for $7,000-something dollars, why can't he write a check for $10,000 that covers the whole thing? The food? Oh, and they like Seal Beach, because Seal Beach has TVs and good beds.
One minute, please.
Did you see this?
Yeah.
Oh, you saw that? Yeah, remember when we had an open house down there, after they spent millions of dollars, the gym and the rooms? So, now, we're only charging $100 a night, and we have to continue to pay. We have, we're paying too much money for contracts. You've been here long enough that you should know, and some of you here have been long enough, Elrie Deaton's been here long enough, she should know what it costs. What did it cost for those parking permits that went anywhere? And then they went to, what, Florida? Why'd they go to Florida for? Why didn't they do it on the TV, Skype? Why did they have to go to Florida? Because it's not your money. It's the taxpayers' money. Not one cop turned around and said, "Thank you, Seal Beach taxpayers." Not one. And crime has gone up. So, I'm ready for the public records. I know you have a Yahoo account. Thank you.
Anyone else?
As all of us, not all the time, we'll agree on each topic, but one of the things that I liked was that Marilyn Snyder's meeting with the whole group. And I know it was a long ordeal. In fact, I think the only two times I might have been able to, I may have been the only one left. Shelley was there. Tom, I, I think you, but by and large, there were very few people that'd speak publicly and they'd go out. What the public at home doesn't hear is that by listing the positive things, and one of the facilit, the facilitator did a great job, when negative items are hard to come out, and you've got your boss sitting there, you don't want to say, "Communication's bad" or something, whatever you think, because you figure you're gonna get your hand slapped or travel to some other city. But what she did was she took cards and had everybody write the negatives down on the cards, shuffled the cards, and handed them out. So, when it came down to the negatives, they were mentioned. One thing that jumped out at me during the seminar was when we were talking about things that worked well, we said communication worked well. One of the things that came out in the negative card was somebody in the, someone of the employees, several of them, said communication wasn't good. So, we had kind of a give-and-take, and by having the facilitator in charge and drawing down these objectives, which go back to when I was in school, 1973, when management by objectives was birthed, and I'm glad to see it, that it finally made it to the public sector. But at any rate, I do think it's a good, a good session, and unlike Newport, that spent $200 million to have the facility, as opposed to leasing it for a couple thousand, I think it's a kind of a bargain, and I would recommend that the citizens spend a little time there. They spend a lot more time, like I do, watching football or doing other things, when they could actually get involved with the city and see what's coming and figure out how it's working. And I think I, again, like I said, I'm disagreeing with Robert. A lot of times, I agree with him. A lot of times, there are councilmembers that know I disagree with some of their positions, trees and things like that, but not the idea of trees, but the idea of a type of tree. And I think I was able to attend, and I saved a lot of money by going to Del Taco. My meal was $1.94. I didn't get a lunch up there, but I don't think I needed a lunch. I'm willing to cover my own. And I just wanted to mention it, I didn't really plan on speaking at all, but I, I think there's two sides to this, and that meeting is important, and getting more public attendance, I think, would be very helpful to the city, too.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on. City Attorney's Report, please.
Now report tonight.
City Manager's Report.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have a couple items tonight. First, I'd like to ask our Public Works Director, Steve Mider, just to give a couple updates to council. As you know, we've been communicating with you about some repair work at the senior center, and so for the benefit of the community and for the latest update to the council, would like to, Steve, just to talk about that briefly and give you a chance to ask questions. Steve?
Thank you, Jill, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Back in, well, as, as we, as this year comes to the end of what was proving to be historic rain, our facility, our city facilities are showing that their roofs are quickly or have reached their useful life, and we are having some challenges. So, one of the, one of the facilities, our community, community center slash library, is having, has had some significant leaking. So, what I was waiting for, the, as the rain is now subsiding, and of course, the rainy season is now coming to an end, we decided to focus at that location, what would it take to fix the leaks? And we started in March, and what we found quickly was the fact that the, it had extensive leaking right along where the roof comes to the wall, and I want to say that'd be the west wall. And the first step, of course, in assessing, trying to understand how best to repair, was, it's a two-step process. You bring out an environmental consultant, because you need to know you had extensive, I observed extensive water damage, and of course, the first step is, is that water, does that water damage potentially have mold? And of course, you have to have an environmental consultant look at it before you can do repairs. Second of all, it's a 40-year facility, 40-year, 40-year-old facility, you need to make sure there's no asbestos involved. So, we need to get that report, so we brought in a consultant that specializes in that kind of work, and we brought him in in March, and we were able to get them moving quickly. And the goal was to identify exactly what we were working with in terms of how to approach the repair, and they came up with a, a set of recommendations, and then we brought And then, we brought in a remediation contractor that specializes in removing water damage. And the report found there was no asbestos material, so we didn't have to deal with that. But there was some mold. We had to assess it, we contained it, and the company that we brought in was certified to work with this, and they were able to remove it. They moved in last Thursday. They came in at 2:00 in the afternoon, they agreed to work through into the night and get it done, because we want to make sure we can get this facility open as soon as possible. They agreed to that, and our environmental consultant stayed the whole time and was able to monitor, and of course, monitor the environment as they worked on it. They came back on Friday when they were done, last Friday, and they certified everything is now removed and it's, it's rated open. So, now, the next step is the carpeting. We're currently getting bids on carpeting. And the carpeting, you could not save, it was just too old, you couldn't really dry it out properly. So, we removed all the carpeting. That was also done by our remediation contractor. And we are currently getting bids, and we are targeting this Friday to be completely done, assuming the carpeting can get installed by then. And contractors are telling us, we got three, we're working with three contractors to get quotes right now. So, we think that's very doable. Friday is the goal, is to have it, have it reopened. And there is one last step. We have drywall we removed, ceiling tiles were removed. We, at this point, will go ahead and use a contractor, or actually, within our staff, our staff could put that drywall back up, it's a small portion. It's in the kit, we're talking about the kitchen, and we're talking about the rec room, which is the west community center. So, the, we did test throughout the facility, everything else was clear, there was no issues, it was very focused, right at that wall, right where the wall came to the roof, the roof and the west wall. So, that was where the damage was, and we had, we went in there, and we'll, the next step will repair those surfaces. And I think we will be looking at all the facilities. We've had leaks in all the facilities. This one was probably the most prominent, so I wanted to focus there. But we will be looking at all the facilities and discussing it further as part of our assessment plan that was done in 2010. Yes?
Just, just one question, not to interrupt you, but is the roof, was it, what was the roof da, I mean, the ceiling or the, the roof structure or tiles or?
The, um, the roof, where the roof comes into the wall, that connection was where it was leaking. And it was probably, it was going through there, and that's where the, the damage was very localized. And since it has, it has ceiling tiles, which were very easily removed, and they have been removed. But the, in the kitchen, which is the same connection, the kitchen itself had what we, what I want to call a hard lid or a, a drywall ceiling. And so, that was very, you, we had to take that down. We took down about eight feet worth. And it, and it's, the structure itself is solid, so it's going to be, it's going to be an extensive repair on the roof. We're going to need to take the tiles off, and the plywood would have to be replaced, and then put the tar paper down, then you put the tiles back.
In its entirety or just isolated?
In the, it's, we, actually, what we did is a couple, we actually brought a roofing contractor out a couple of days ago, and we wanted to make sure, we actually pulled a piece of it off, and we wanted to see what we were dealing with, so we can get a better estimate. And the roof, the plywood itself is going to have to be replaced, but the roof structure is solid.
And all the groups that used that facility have been informed and?
The, the groups have been informed, we were able to find other locations to meet at.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And we, the contractors are both very, they're specialty contractors, and they were very, we were, we were very fortunate they can come out on short notice. We wanted, we, we identified it, we wanted to move forward as quickly as possible. They agreed to work till 10:00 at night on Thursday, I think it was Thursday, yeah. So, they agreed to work into the evening hours, and that way, we were able to get, get it done before the weekend. And it was a small enough job that the contractor was, was more than willing to come in and get it done and get to his next job. So, roofing contractors are extremely busy right now. And that's probably an understatement. So, we were very fortunate that, to get these specialty contractors in so quickly. And we have other facilities, and we'll be talking about that during the strategic plan, that have, not to this extent, but actually, there is one facility that comes to mind, Joe, the Lifeguard Tower. So, we will be talking about those facilities also, but we have, there are some roofs that were, this, I think the, the five years of drought, the historic drought, kind of masked the issues, and now the rain came. So, it really brought it toward the forefront. And that's kind of where we're at, and we should have all the carpet bids by tomorrow, and we're still targeting Friday night. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you, Steve. And then, just one more update on where we're at with the Seventh Street Alley project, now that the rain's subsided, and hopefully, we can keep that project moving into completion.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce concrete trucks and concrete crews will be here tomorrow. That is, the last step is putting the concrete surface down, the new concrete alley surface. All the utilities are down, connected, and they will work through the week in laying concrete, and they should be done by Friday night. It's possible it might drift into Saturday morning. We have authorized that, we do not want them coming back next week. So, it's possible we may have to work into Saturday morning to get them done this week. So, that, that will conclude that, that project.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
All right. We're moving ahead. Council comments? Councilmember Sastarsik?
I was pleased last week to attend the dedication of the Lamson Avenue Water Well to Alan Bramlett, a city employee that worked for City of Seal Beach for 38 years. It was a very nice ceremony, there was a plaque put up on the wall outside, and a lot of presence there by city staff and Public Works Department. And there were refreshments and everything, it was very nice. I also, on Friday, attended my last meeting of the Public Policy Making Academy at UCI, and I just wanted to thank the city for giving me the opportunity to attend. It's been a good learning experience, I still have a capstone project to finish, but I, I appreciate, thank you very much.
Councilmember Deaton?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Commander Bowles. It looks like he isn't here, I was hoping he would be here. So, we have a new commander. Thank you, Steve, for the alley question, I appreciate that. Quinn, good to see you. And my last comment is happy birthday to Virginia Haley, our Old Town matriarch who turns 100 this month.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize and thank our city clerk for the folders, the little, the red and blue-green folders that we get. There's a lot of information stated on here that's received after the agenda, and it's just nice to see it in tight print, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I enjoyed going to a meeting on how to prevent fraud at Leisure World and Clubhouse Three, along with the Mayor Masalava. There are a lot of great tips on how to protect yourself from people trying to take advantage of others through phone calls, computers, and other methods. And I was also happy to hear that there were no, relatively no incidents on St. Patrick's Day, and that I want to thank our police department for making it a safe day in Seal Beach. Thanks.
And I have nothing to report. Okay, now we get to council items. Review of the Senior Mobility Program. Consideration of modifying the existing Orange County Transportation Authority Senior Mobility Program Agency Service Plan. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm going to turn this item over to our Deputy Public Works Director, Michael Ho, and as the council, where we call, Councilmember Moore had requested this item be brought up for discussion, and so, we're presenting to you what our current senior mobility plan looks like, and then, we'll open it up for questions of the council if there's any further direction. Michael?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Mayor and members of the city council, tonight's agenda item A is the Senior Mobility Program Update. At the March 13th, 2017 city council meeting, Councilman Moore requested an agenda item to discuss the potential of considering adding the VA Hospital to our Senior Mobility Dial-A-Ride Program. Staff investigated this request by contacting OCTA and Keolis, our city's transportation provider. We spoke with OCTA and asked basically, how hard would it be to add the VA Hospital? And they said, "It's not hard at all, it's a very simple amendment, staff amendment. It doesn't need to go to the board at all." And it doesn't jeopardize any OCTA funding, so just by adding a location, doesn't jeopardize that at all. We spoke with Keolis, we asked them in the past how many trips we had to the VA Hospital, and they basically responded with, on the average, about three to four trips per month. In addition to the staff report, after it was released, we did receive an email that raised a couple of questions. There was an inadvertent error on the staff report. The operating times currently for the Dial-A-Ride Program is Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00, and not as stated in the staff report, so I do want to make that correction. The second item on the email claims that there's an error on the boundary limits. Just to clarify, there is no error in the staff report. The approved service plan allows for medical trips outside the city, up to three miles within Orange County. So, that is the reason why we're here tonight to ask for that request into Long Beach. Therefore, it's recommended the city council, at the request of Councilman Moore, discuss the existing OCTA Senior Mobility Program Service Plan. And this concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, do you have any questions?
It seems like a pretty easy decision, so, no.
Yeah, I just have a question. Could you tell me, Michael, what is our total cost to the city for the senior transportation program right now?
Currently, the city expends about $210,000 per year, per fiscal year, but we do get about $65,000 from OCTA and $30,000 from AQMD funds.
Now, does that take from the 210, or is that in addition to the 210?
Oh, that's incorporated. So, it's, the city would spend less, $95,000 of the 210.
Okay, so, we're, okay, so, now, by, and I certainly support taking our vets to the VA Hospital, so I don't want this to be misconstrued. How do we increase service without increasing cost?
Well, speaking with Keolis, they said that it's such a negligible trip amount, three to four trips per month would not hurt or operate, any deter the part of the program, so that's easily.
And who monitors that to make sure that we stay within our budget?
Well, we run per hour. So, Monday through Friday, it's a fixed cost. Every billing statement is roughly, on average, the same. So, for the Dial-A-Ride Program, it runs Monday through Friday at an hourly rate.
Okay, so, it, it makes no difference to us where they go, it's a flat rate to us?
Correct.
Okay, that answers that question. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Vera Pappa?
Thank you. I just had a couple of brief questions, too. And the Exhibit A shows the projected cost for 2017 for the cities of Garden Grove, Laguna Woods, and Seal Beach. But I wasn't sure why it didn't show the projected cost for 2018, 19, 20, and 21 as it did for Garden Grove and Laguna Woods. Do you know why that would be not shown for our city, but shown for the other cities?
Yeah, I'm not too sure. I do see the Exhibit A in there, correct. There's no projections for 2018 on. We can ask OCT.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious about that. And I know that the objectives of the program was to provide options that complement, not duplicate. So, this wouldn't be duplicating anything that we're doing now.
Not at all.
I think that's a good thing. And then, the last question is, does the insurance coverage change since we're going outside the county? Is that something, I guess, you looked into and wouldn't have a problem with? Because I know this is, you know, previously, was strictly for Orange County, and even though it's only, you know, stone's throw away, but you never know with insurance companies, but just kind of a question I had on top of my head.
Right, the insurance wouldn't change. The previous service plan that we had earlier last year already went to the VA Hospital.
Right.
So, there wouldn't be any change.
And it's probably closer than any other hospital at this point, right?
It's about 1.2 miles, I believe, from the boundary.
Okay, thank you.
So, we used to go to VA, what happened?
We did. So, back mid-last year, we had a service plan change, and that was one of the items that was presented publicly, and it was changed during the council meeting to eliminate the VA Hospital. So, in the past, we've always been taking our seniors to the VA Hospital. It was just recently changed last year.
I'm sure none of us intended that to happen.
Was it, yeah, was that, was that by design that it was changed? I mean, was that a discussion point that changed it? Because I sure don't remember that either.
I don't either.
Yeah, I don't recall how it was changed, but it was presented at the beginning of the meeting for the service plan adoption. So, it was changed.
It was the service plan adoption, we didn't notice they changed the service there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions? No?
Oh, can we make a motion to?
You can, please make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, or, does this have to be on the future agenda to pass?
No, actually, you can do it tonight, because the item is identified as consideration, and so, you can take action.
I'd like a motion to add the VA Hospital to the Dial-A-Ride.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ho. Appointment of the Environmental Quality Control Board, emergency acting appointment of Rich Coles to the Environmental Quality Control Board as Rep. 4, District 3.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll turn this item over to our city clerk, Robin Roberts, just to give you a brief summary and questions if council has any. Robin?
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This item is being brought to you so that, because there was a, I, yeah, my, I'll talk closer to it. We have mic issues sometimes. There was a, there was a resignation, an unexpected resignation from the EQCB Board from Mr. Ed Hirsch, and Councilmember, Mayor Protem Vera Pappa would like to make the appointment so that this emergency appointment will allow Rich Coles to participate in the next EQCB Board meeting. So, in order to make that happen, because 10 days, 10 working days have not lapsed from the resignation, the posting of the notice of resignation and this meeting, we need to go ahead and appoint him on an emergency basis, and he'll fulfill that role on an acting basis until the next city council meeting, when we'll make the formal appointment.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make that motion, and in addition, thank Mr. Hirsch for his services for the last two years, I really appreciate it, and I look forward to working with Rich Coles, too. Thank you.
Good. Is there a second?
Second?
Or is there any, okay, now, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Five to zero.
We've got a good man there.
Mr. Coles, you're on. Okay, now, we get to the consent calendar, where there's so much confusion for me. Can we have a motion to approve CDEGIJ?
I'll make a motion.
And also noting the abstentions of Councilmembers Moore and Sastarsik on Item I.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and a second? I'll second. Okay, please vote. Five to zero. We'll back up now to Item F, Seal Beach Shores Monitoring Affordable Housing Solution, or, solution, that's kind of, Resolution Number 6719. Solution, or, solution, that's kind of, Resolution Number 6719, approving an agreement amendment with JWA Urban Consultants for Seal Beach Shores Affordable Housing Monitoring Service in an amount not to exceed $12,000. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So I'm going to turn this item over to our Finance Director, Vicky Beetley, and I do believe Mr. Jack Wong from Jack Wong and Associates is here tonight as well. Vicky?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we actually do have Mr. Wong, who's with JWA Urban Consultants here. So if there's any questions specific to the work that's already done, or going to be done, I'll redirect those questions to Mr. Wong. But by way of background, in July of 2015, JWA Urban Consultants came to the city to help us with a project over at Seal Beach Shores, which is the mobile home park on the west side of town. And the mobile home park, for all intents and purposes, is the city's affordable housing component. And at that time, the reason that the work was contracted is because the mobile home park had come to the city talking about perhaps refinancing the debt that the park had on the city. And in order for the refinance to happen, the city essentially needed to, if you will, buy off on the compliance that was occurring in the mobile home park. So we contracted with JWA Urban Consultants to help us get to the point where we were comfortable that the management company was complying with the covenants of the, both the bond document and the regulatory agreement. So through that process, there's been a number of challenges, and earlier in the fiscal year, there was another contract bought to this, brought to the city to increase the funding, because the scope continued on, and the primary reason for delays was the management company that was currently in process at Seal Beach Shores was either not understanding what we were looking for, or not helpful in responding to the consultant's questions. And in fact, the consultant on several occasions actually visited the site and talked to them about what he's actually looking for, and provided examples of documents that he would be looking for. And very often, the response from the property manager was, "Well, we'll get, we'll get you that, we'll get you that, we'll get you that. That's too much work. We can't do that." So various ongoing issues. There was a draft report that was provided to myself and Jim Basham at the end of the most recent reporting period, and there were still some compliance issues. I'd rather not go into the details, because we'd like to get them resolved before, before the document is finalized, at which time then the successor agency Oversight Board actually will see the, will see the document. So that being said, we're now at a point where, in partnership, and I have to say very happily, in partnership with Seal Beach Shores, there is a new management company. There was new board members that were elected. They brought in a new management company. The new management company has a great deal of experience in managing affordable housing units, and are willing and able to work with the city of Seal Beach. However, the challenge that we have is that none of the work, I'm quoting third party, this is not me saying this, that none of the work that the management company was required to file had been done. And effectively, the management company had been, had stopped providing support in October. So I met with the new management company, and that's how come I know that there were some issues about reporting. For example, the audit hadn't been done, some reports hadn't been filed with the State Controller's Office, those kinds of things. So I'm giving you that much background, just to let you know what sort of we're up against over at Seal Beach Shores. Mr. Wong can speak specifically to some of the other challenges that he's come to. However, our goal is to have this project fully done by the end of the fiscal years, and we are asking for an additional $12,000. That's a $7,000 expected cost with a $5,000 contingency, because we're not certain how much more effort on JWA Consultants' part is going to have to be used. And then I'll finish by saying that once this is done, once this audit is done, this is not a cost that we'll be continuing. This is a one-time thing, and specifically to ensure compliance with the agreements, so that if, in fact, Seal Beach Shores does at some point in time want to refinance, that we can wholeheartedly and confidently go to the State of California Department of Finance and say, "The city supports the refinance." So with that, I will be able to answer any questions, and I'd like to have Mr. Wong come up to the podium, in case the council has any questions specific to the project.
I have a question, Vicky, but it doesn't have to do with Mr. Wong. I do not understand why we can't ask the state to pay for this, since this, I understand that this is after we filed all the ROPS and everything. I get that. But things happen, and it seems to me that we could request it, since had it, had we been with the redevelopment agency, this would have been paid out of the redevelopment agency. We can't be the only city that has run into problems later and had to go back and say, "Oops, we need this because this happened." What do you think?
Well, Councilmember Deaton, City Attorney Barrow may be able to jump in and answer that question a little bit more, but I have to tell you unequivocally, that in my experience with other agencies that I've spoken to, nothing gets added after the ROPS have been approved, unless you go through a fairly lengthy process. And to the extent that this work is being done, really is benefiting the city, so I believe we would spend more time and dollars asking the Department of Finance to pay for this contract, and in fact, they would turn down the request for additional funds. Mr. Barrow, can you?
Yep, well, that's been my experience. The whole redevelopment dissolution process, the state doesn't want to give any more money on anything. And so cities have run into unexpected issues, and sought to amend their ROPS, and they've always been denied.
All right, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Could you explain, what is ROPS? Just the acronym itself?
It's Recognized Obligations Payable, basically, for services. And it's something that, that happened with the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. And when the redevelopment agencies were dissolved, cities were compelled to indicate any expenses that were related to the redevelopment agency. And any and all expenses had to be sort of vetted and proved with the State Department of Finance. And so now, those are the only things that are approved on the listing, and we can't, as Mr. Barrow said, we cannot add any new costs, et cetera.
Yeah, I know. We got dumped on.
We did.
Big time. And we're a small city. Now, as I understand it, there was a consulting firm that was working with the management company, RSG. Was that Rosenau Spevesek?
Yes, that's Rosenau. RSG was, is what's called the Oversight Agent. So they were who the management company was reporting to. And there are some challenges with RSG's work effort as Oversight Agent, so there are some other changes that are going to be taking place. Eventually, we are going to be replacing the Oversight Agent. But one of the, the challenges specific to the work that Mr. Wong is doing is that RSG was essentially taking the management company's information that was provided as being true and correct, and not looking into it or vetting it on their own. And the management company was, was saying, "Well, gee, RSG didn't say there was a problem, so there must not have been a problem." And so we sort of get into a catch-22 of issues. Many of these issues that Mr. Wong has discovered should have actually been identified at least two years ago, if not longer. But that being said, to Councilwoman Deaton's, we're moving forward, and not wanting to go back. But there have been a multitude of challenges with the reporting requirements for Seal Beach Shores to the Oversight Agent.
Any questions of Mr. Wong?
Um, Mayor Deaton, I'm here. Masalavat, I have a question real fast. The compliance audit, are we 50% complete, 75%, 80%?
I am going to ask Mr. Wong to come to the podium and give you his most expert-
Finish it this fiscal year.
We're intending to finish it by June 30th.
April, May, June, three months away. I would imagine we're over 70%?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable members of the city council. My name's Jack Wong with JWA. We've been working on this project since 2015, and the compliance audit is, we're underway. We're getting closer. If I had to say a percentage, I'd say closer to 70%. But I'm pretty confident that we'll have it finished by June. I feel good what's happened, what's transpired as of late with the management companies, the people that I've been working with at SBSI, the board members, the property manager. So I'm very optimi, I'm optimistic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what we need to hear, optimism. Councilmember Moore?
Could you tell us a little bit about what you've done so far?
Well, we finished our first audit, which was the compliance report back in 2015, in December. From working from that basis moving forward, we've been meeting with the SBSI property manager and the office management that's there, and we're working through their files. And that's one of been the primary issues, is the file management at the office. So we've been kind of leading them through the formatting organization of the files. That, I'm happy to say, has been happening in late fall of 2016. So it's moving forward while we're at this stage. Up till now, also, we've identified a file management system that they're starting to implement, and I've yet to talk with Les Frame, the new property manager, to see how they're handling the transition moving forward. However, we've compiled a comprehensive list of questions that we need to have addressed. And I think, once we get those answers back, I don't feel that there should be any obstacles for us to finish our report. The main one that we really need to have are those mandatory calculations, the worksheets. And that's something that I believe Les Frame will be able to, to assist with.
Are these worksheets that the management company has, that you need, or?
It's something that the, the prior property manager had, had calculated, I was told, within their head, but they never kept a paper document. And so, as a result, going through the files, we never found any paper documentation of these calculations to determine low and moderate income categories of each resident, nor how they calculated their financial assistance.
So how, how are you going to do it now, to, to finish the audit?
They have, since, I'd say, I think back in May or June of 2016, the management, the prior management company had sent out some requests for information, asking for updated income, among other, other bits of information from each of the residents. So that has been coming in. In late 2016, I was told that they've got most of the Exhibit Bs, the updated Exhibit Bs. And so I think at this point, that's part of the transition now with the new property manager.
Assuming they have all of that data, is this, this amount would cover that?
I believe so, yes.
Does the management company, or has the management company dealt with an affordable housing project before?
The prior afford, the current one?
No, the current.
I, I believe the current ones have. They have done affordable housing projects.
You know, you could tell, you, you'd know when you spoke to them.
Yeah.
You'd hear the right jargon.
Yeah.
They'd know what you were talking about, Form B, and C and D, and what they are. Does it sound as though they are familiar with running an affordable housing program like that one?
I, I myself have not talked to them, but I've seen their resume, their biography, the profile of the company, and so forth.
Mayor Masalavat, if I could jump in, I would say, yes, they have. I've met with them already, and I fully feel that they are highly qualified for this. The only difference between this and many of the other projects, if not all of the other projects, is that we have the rental subsidy program through the State of California from the ROPS, and that's not something that they've ever had experience with. But that's something that we can help them through the process. But all of the other, when I met with them, they had read the regulatory agreement, they had read the bond document, and they had questions specifically related to issues that they had seen in both of those documents, specifically about the client, the, the income recertifications, and whether or not the use of the rental subsidy was being appropriately applied, whether or not denials were being fairly administered, and those kinds of things. So they had already raised several issues in that first meeting with them, or with me.
Okay. As long as they know what they're doing, I don't want to have to re-educate anyone. Not me personally, but us.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Vicky, is there a date certain that this low-income properties ends being low-income, or is this going to be part of our low-income property in perpetuity?
Okay, so, the short answer is yes and no.
Oh.
And the, the reality is that there were some legally changed documents. The first date that comes to mind is 2035, and that's when one of the agreements specifically with related, relation to affordability, I think, may be changing. But as far as I know, and then there was an extension to, do you remember, Jack, was it 20?
2055, I believe.
2055. There was an extension of one of the agreements to 2055. And that's part of the challenge, is we have a bond regulatory agreement that differs from the regulatory agreement of the park, and how the low mod income is handled in the park. And so those are some of the challenges that actually Mr. Wong has been attempting to work through, and the new management company. So for at least another 40 years, almost, they will be part of the city's affordable housing solution in compliance with the housing element.
I won't need to worry about it after that.
Nor will I.
Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Thank you. Good night.
I need no other discussion? And what is our?
I'd move the Resolution Number 6719, approving an agreement amendment with JWA Urban Consultants for the Seal Beach Shores Affordable Housing Monitoring Services in an amount not to exceed $12,000.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, five to zero. Thank you. Next item is City of Seal Beach Strategic Plan, Six Months Strategic Objectives Update. This is a receive-and-file document. Would, who pulled it?
I think Mr. Moore?
Did you pull it?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to comment?
Just on, on the five-year financial plan, I saw an update on that. Could you just give a summary?
Sure, and I'll, I'll go into more detail. Member Moore, the, the update is that, that there's some components and other studies that need to be done. For example, the formation of the joint powers, new joint powers agreement, and specifically the water rate study slash adoption, that really makes sense to be done before we move forward on an endeavor to do a long-term financial plan. There are some change, challenges with forecasting, for example, the pension costs. We have more information from CalPERS on those, and the city has a solution to help us project those future costs of the retirement. But until we have those components done, it just doesn't make sense for us to move forward and hire a consultant, when we don't have all of the information that they would need to put together a long-term forecast.
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Go ahead, you always let me go first.
Just quickly, as long as we're on this, the picnic tables on the beach? I know we had a date and it was pulled and is there a new date or is it just?
I believe the earliest date we heard for re-agendizing that for commission discussion was sometime in June.
Were there any specific issues or was it just?
I think the concern was there was enough comments and feedback from residents, both in support and opposition to the permit application, that they removed it from their consent calendar and will re-agendize it for commission discussion at a later date. So it was based solely, at least from my understanding from staff, it was based solely on the fact that it was a consent calendar item and because they had what they considered a significant number of comments to it, that they would re-agendize it, not on a consent calendar.
So the hearing date's set by them for the new one and not?
Is there any way of asking the Coastal Commission to have it on a hearing that's nearby so we don't have to go to Eureka?
We can always ask.
Yeah.
Their discretion.
If it's sooner than later, I think that would be a good idea.
If it's, even if it's a month later, I know the summer will be over by then. Yeah, we are.
I, I'd like to make a comment on the six-month strategic objectives. I want to thank Mr. Bennett for staying all day because it is a long day and seeing the value of it and, and thanks for, for that. We have held them both at the fire station and at Old Ranch. And I very much appreciate the day. As far as what's on time and what's overtime and what has been done and what hasn't been done, basically, for those that have been there, they know that what we're asked to do is to look and just dream big. Make a dream and, and put a date to it that you think you'd like to get it done. These are not hard and fast, this has to be done by this. These are, are benchmarks to be worked within the, the staff to reach. It gives them a reaching time. And then the accountability of bringing it back to us. If, if they don't make something and there was a penalty to it, they wouldn't be willing to reach for it and to, to put those dates on. And I really appreciate the fact that the staff has put some dates on, knowing that they're holding their own feet to the fire. And I appreciate every, everything that you've done in the strategic planning to try and make us a more focused, more targeted city with goals that residents and council and staff are all working together on. So thank you.
Any other comments?
With that, I'd just say, receive and file.
So receive and file? And we'll do that. The next item is K, Plans and Specs for Westminster Avenue Rehab Project, CIP number ST 1610 and Westminster Avenue Meeting, Median Improvement Project from the West City Limits to Seal Beach Boulevard.
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll turn this item over to Caesar Rangel, our associate engineer, who's, will be managing this project. Caesar?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, tonight's agenda item K is to approve the plans and specs for the Westminster Avenue project. This project consists of resurfacing the street from West City Limits to Seal Beach Boulevard. Along with that, we're going to redoing the landscaping in the medians. So with that, it'll be drip system, irrigation, and tolerant, water-tolerant shrubs in, as well. That's pretty much the, the project or the scope of the project. This is through a grant that we got through OCTA for city match of $500,000. And then the other half would be paid through the grant. The plans and specs are available at our Public Works Department for review. And this concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, please let me know.
I have a question.
Yes.
Aren't the plants already in the median water-tolerant?
Some of them might be water-tolerant, but this will improve all the shrubs throughout the entire medians there.
They were just planted a few years ago, weren't they? Or maybe time flies because I'm getting old.
Well, this project is reviving. We, we did at first, we went to, we were going to go out to bid and introduce this project, but then it got postponed. We figured now, since we're going to repave the street, it'd be better to landscape everything and then you come back and repave the street and so you don't have to, you have trucks running on the new paving surface.
Any questions from the council?
Madam Mayor, yeah, I had a couple of questions. So is the grant awarded at this time? It has been awarded?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, it was December of 14th, we pretty much executed the co-op agreement with the OCTA.
And is the work curb-to-curb line or does it include sidewalk and, and drainage or how's that?
It's basically, yeah, no, it is just resurfacing pavement. If there is any concrete needing for just as far as removing or replace, any displacements in the sidewalk, curb and gutter, we'll do those at the same time. But it's basically just the resurfacing of the street, grinding over.
So curb-to-curb, pretty much?
Yes.
Nothing on the drainage inlet, nothing along the wall?
No, no, not even, yeah, just the curb.
And is it, is it similar to the project that you did on the east side of Westminster?
Very similar.
Except for the median work, of course.
Exactly.
And is it the same cost? I don't recall what that was.
No, the other one was, was it $200, $2, $2 million?
Yeah, a lot more.
Yeah, this is only a million, so it's half.
This is only a million?
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean.
As public works projects go, that's not much, huh?
Yeah, okay. Because I know you did some work in the median seven or eight years ago, but I guess this is kind of an upgrade of that. Is that, there was some median work done there 78, 9 years ago.
Yeah, I think that's when it got planted. I didn't realize it was even that.
It probably has some improvements, but I think, you know, the grant's a good thing and it's always an opportunity to get money from the OCTA and, and use it for the city's benefits, so, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I had, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Moore?
Have we, have we looked at doing drought-tolerant plants that we don't have to replace?
Yeah, I mean, the, the plants will be selective, some of the plants are staying. So our architect has gone through the, you know, what's existing and the ones that need to be removed will be removed and then the ones that are drought-tolerant will just stay in place.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, this is a, approve the plans and specs, there's no resolution. So our motion is to adopt the project, plans and specs for Westminster Avenue Rehab Project and Westminster Avenue Median Improvement Project. Is there a motion?
And also authorizing staff to solicit bids.
Yeah, and authorizing staff, okay. That goes with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the plans and specs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, five to zero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Public hearing. An ordinance of the City of Seal Beach amending table 11 dot 2 dot 05 dot 015 and section 11 dot 2 dot 05 dot 015 dot D of chapter 11 dot 2 dot 05, title 11 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code relating to residential development standards for properties abutting Seal, Seal Way in the RDH 20 Zone. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll turn this item over to Crystal Landavazo, our acting Director of Community Development. Crystal?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As a quick refresher, on October 25th, 2010, the City Council adopted a comprehensive update of the city's zoning code, which was previously titled Chapter 28, and was reenacted as Title 11 to correspond with new formatting of the city's municipal code, which had been done in 2004. As reflected in staff reports at the time, the intent of the 2010 Title 11 zoning code revision was not to change existing residential development standards. However, in reformatting the development standards from written text in Chapter 28 into a table for Title 11, some standards were inadvertently changed. One such change was the setback requirement for properties facing Seal Way. Chapter 28 previously allowed properties abutting Seal Way to have a setback of zero feet from the boardwalk along Seal Way. In the reformatting, all development standards into Table 11, this specific provision appears to have been inadvertently left out. This inadvertent omission made many properties along Seal Way non-conforming, a designation which restricts improvements that can be made to these properties. Chapter 28 recognized that the area along Seal Way is a unique area within the RDH 20 Zone and set a specific development standard to reflect this. The amendments proposed in tonight's draft ordinance are intended to remedy the unintended omission of the zero setback standard for the properties along Seal Way without altering any other existing standards applicable to the rest of the RDH 20 Zone. On February 21st, this draft ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission, who reviewed, held a public hearing of the Zone Text Amendment, and voted to recommend adoption of the Zone Text Amendment to the City Council. This concludes staff's report. Staff's available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any, is there any questions? Are there any questions? No. Okay, seeing none.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Right. Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this issue? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Now I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance amending table 11 dash 2 dash 05 dash 015 and section, as noted, of the chapter 11 point 2 point 05 of Title 11 in order to go back to zero setbacks.
Is there a second?
Second. Mayor, before the vote, I'll read the title. An ordinance of the City of Seal Beach amending table 11 point 2 point 05 point 015 and section 11 point 2 point 05 point 015 point D of chapter 11 point 2 point 05, Title 11 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code relating to residential development standards for properties abutting Seal Way in the RDH 20 Zone.
Okay, I think we need to vote. Five to zero, thank you.
I, I have a question. How many more, Crystal, problems are you guys getting at the counter like this where the Title 11 and the chapter 28 are giving us problems?
How many more is, is a hard question to answer. These types of things tend to come up occasionally and I think with most cities, when there's a large update like this, you try to catch everything, but you don't, you realize it after the fact. And as they come up, what we do is we, if something looks like it is a, a major issue, we go back, look at the staff reports to see if it was an intended change or if it was something that was overlooked. If we see that there's no evidence, no suggestion that this was something that was intended to be done, then we'll try to come back and, and clean it. We've, we've done this maybe twice, I think, at this point, the two-story item and then, and then this item here. As they come up, we, we research it and if it's necessary, then we will bring it back.
Okay, I, I would like to ask staff just to keep a list of the things that are incompatible between Title 11 and the old chapter 28, because I think they give us a lot of issues when a homeowner goes to planning and, well, it used to be this way, why isn't it? This doesn't make sense. And if we had a list, maybe we could do an easy, more inexpensive update than if we went through and, and tried to.
Just one alone.
Right, right.
Mass correction.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. And just a precursor for next week's strategic planning session, I know, as all of you know, we do a SWOT analysis as part of the beginning part of that session. And one of the things staff's going to be bringing to you in terms of opportunity is, is how we want to address this since we keep coming up against some of these issues, so.
Okay, thank you. A list might help.
Thank you. There is no unfinished or continued business. It appears there's no new business. We are adjourned to the City Council meeting of Monday, April 10th, 2017, at 5:30 to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you all for coming.